...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome everyone. Yes, it's on now. Can everybody hear me okay?
Nope.
All right, the green light should be on. Okay. Let's try that.
Moves from my heart.
Okay. Does everybody have an agenda? A lot easier if everybody has a agenda you can follow along.
Everybody has an agenda.
I mean the paper agenda. Christine Howard getting to do business today. All right. Move on to the pledge of allegiance to item number two, which is the public comment section. Members of the public may comment on any item not listed on the agenda of the jurisdiction of the agency. In addition, members of the public may speak on the item listed on the agenda as that item comes up for consideration. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes, as provided in round hack before this, prohibited from acting on items not listed on the agenda. Make sure that we're clear. During this time of the public comment, item number two, anybody can approach the board, the audience here, and talk for three minutes. After that, when we get to the public hearing, you can also address the board. We're up to three minutes. During this section, you can talk to us about anything you'd like. The section having to do with public hearing, that's probably the most important spot would be where you would address the maps that we will look at today. So is everybody clear? You can handle up to six minutes. The items will be separated into two, three minutes. Okay? Okay, we're clear? And we'll move on to our next public comments. Anybody who'd like to address the board during this portion of our meeting? Yes, sir, miss her or your board? Can you hand it first?
Thank you very much. Jeff Bowman, owner of Livid Water Spa here in the wonderful city of Desert Hot Springs for 15 years, and former board member of Mission Springs Water District. Thank you for looking at it. I appreciate it. As you know, I served on the Mission Springs Water District for nine years. You have the power to save your taxpayers and our taxpayers a lot of money if you would allow Mission Springs Water District to be the GSA over their service area. If you add it, I don't know, we're probably close to over a million dollars in legal fees there. If I'd be seaching you that the tables were turned and you had a district saying that you cannot control the water production in your area, you could not be the GSA, you'd be doing the same thing in the MSWD. They're not asking you to become the state water project contractor. They're just wanting to be able to control the water on their side to freedom. Will you please do the right thing and allow that to happen and save the taxpayers of DWA and MSWD a lot of money? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Next speaker, please. Mr. Baker.
Good morning. For the record, Carl Baker. I just simply want to thank you for coming out to Desert Hot Springs for this meeting today. I especially want to thank you for picking an hour other than 8:00 AM. You know what it's like having traveled over here now, and that maybe it's a better time for some of us. I hope we can join together in a common spirit. This can become a very contentious issue, but we at Desert Hot Springs have been left out for a long time. And it's kind of sad in a way that we've had to resort to legal elbowing to get to this point. But once we're here, let's go forward with a common goal and see if we can, when it comes to the portion of the meeting where we start talking about the actual maps, talking about what is likely to be fair and benefit for the most, given the guidelines established by the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next speaker, please. Only once, only twice. At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to item number three. This is a presentation by the National Demographics Corporation. This time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Doug Johnson from the National Demographics Corporation. Mr. Johnson will present the maps in the PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Johnson.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Doug Johnson from National Demographics, and I'm going to walk through the rules and process around the drawing of the maps and then get into the details of the maps. Jump in. Under state law, there is really a two-stage process. It's a little bit odd, but it's set down in the law. First, in the districts where I completed this part, there are informational hearings without any draft maps available at those. Those were held back in February. And then the maps were released, and now we're in the second stage, which is holding two hearings to talk about the draft maps, get your feedback on the draft maps, and also the election sequencing. And then the board will adopt the map and it'll get implemented. And it's a little bit of an odd time. The district is one of scores of jurisdictions dealing with odd timing in the decade because there's the 2020 election where the map that's adopted will be used in the two divisions that are up that year. Then the 2020 census data comes out in 2021, and the map will actually be revisited and possibly adjusted, almost certainly adjusted, prior to the 2022 election. So it is a little bit weird where we're choosing a map. It is worth noting, we're choosing that now that will only be used in part. It is worth noting that the 2021 redistricting is generally done as tweaking of the lines, not a from scratch process like this is today. In terms of the rules for how the lines get drawn, there are really two sets of rules. The first are federal laws. These are requirements that we have to do. So we have to have an equal population in each division. This is using 2010 census data, even though we're late in the decade, the courts still rely on that 2010 census data to look at how many people. And it's not registered voters, it's not eligible voters, it's human beings counted in the census are in each proposed division. And there's a couple percent deviation, but it's really a very strict requirement. Then there's the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says if there is a community or a neighborhood that is heavily, what the law calls a protected class, so it could be Latino, African American, Asian American, or Native American. If there's a neighborhood or a community that's heavily one of those protected classes, that area cannot be divided in a way that dilutes their voting strength. We have a couple of areas where that comes into play here. And at the same time, the federal law says no racial gearing mandarin. Really what that means is I can put a map up that shows city block by city block the ethnic estimates. That cannot be the predominant factor. So race can be one factor, but it cannot be the predominant factor. That's why I mentioned that for the Federal Voting Rights Act, we're looking at neighborhoods or communities that are heavily protected class. The way you avoid racial gearing mandarin is by moving blocks in neighborhoods or whole communities, not by splitting up block by block where you can avoid that. So those three are the requirements. We have to do all three of those. Where the decisions and the discretion really comes down is in choosing the map that best meets the list on the right, which is the traditional redistricting principles. These are really the goals of going through this process, and they're goals, not requirements. So the goal is to keep communities of interest or to respect communities of interest, I'll come back to that in a moment, to the degree possible to be compact and contiguous and follow visible, clearly recognizable borders. Those three are really so that it's easy for voters to know which division they're in. If someone wants to go knock on doors in support of a candidate they like, we want it to be easy to know which door to knock on. Then another traditional redistricting principle is respect voters' choices, or sometimes referred to as continuity in office. This is the idea, and again, it's a goal, not a requirement, the idea to try to avoid pairing board members where you can so that the voters can decide which board members have earned reelection. Essentially, if board members are paired in a division, then it doesn't matter what the voters think, one of them is not going to get another term, regardless of what the voters think. Whereas if you can keep them apart, then the voters get to decide. And then at the bottom, kind of grayed out, is plain future growth. As I mentioned, these lines are only going to be used for next year's election. Then they'll be revisited in 2021. So there's not a lot of future growth expected. In 2021, this will be a much bigger consideration, as those lines will be in place for 10 years. So I didn't want it to be a surprise in 2021 when you see that little list, but it's not really something that's factoring into this plan right now. So again, we've got the must-do federal requirements, and then where the discretion is, is in choosing which map best balances the traditional principles on the right. Just for a quick reference, we put this together early on in the process. This is the population of each city or what the census calls a census-designated place. So like Whitewater and Desert Edge are not cities, but the census still tallies population counts by what it estimates to be their boundaries. And, you know, no surprise, I'm sure to all you, you've got Desert Hot Springs, which in the 2010 census, which again is the numbers that are used for this process, Desert Hot Springs was just below 26,000, Palm Springs is about 44,500, Cathedral City is right at 6,000. So you've got a big spread of population and obviously a large population in the jurisdiction. The key thing is, is when we're looking at each of the five divisions, we're dividing the total population of the whole jurisdiction by five, and we're ending up at just under 18,000 people in each division. Now, this is that map, it's a little hard to see here, the details of it, but you're probably more or less familiar with it. When I talked about the communities of protected classes, we're really, the biggest one by far here is the Latino population. There are some African American and Asian pockets, but not, that are not large enough to really influence the demographics of the division. So when we're looking at Latino population, we're looking, obviously, there's a big cluster in the more urban part of Desert Hot Springs. The north piece of Cathedral City is heavily Latino, and then Palm Springs has a couple of pockets that we want to keep together and avoid dividing in order to keep their voting strength non-diluted. It's also worth noting that it is possible to draw, up here in Desert Hot Springs area and drawing a little bit in Desert Edge, a Latino majority of the division, where Latinos would be a majority of the citizens of voting age. And that's what the courts look at is, in terms of Voting Rights Act, is the eligible voters. And the data that the courts have found the best for that is the citizens of voting age population, where they look at the percentages of that. And that's where we're looking to ensure compliance with the second piece of the Voting Rights Act. And all the maps you already have in this particular department. In terms of communities of interest, there are actually two questions about communities of interest. The first is what is your community of interest? Could be the city, it could be a neighborhood within a city, it could be pretty much anything that people say is their neighborhood. And people are familiar with that question. There's a second question, which is, okay, that's your community of interest or that's your neighborhood, do you want it united in one seat or in one division? So do you have the maximum chance and the maximum voting strength in that division, the maximum chance of electing candidate one from that one division? Or do you want it divided? So that one part of the community is voting for one board member, another part of the community is voting for another board member, and now you have two board members coming back and campaigning and answering to the voters in their area? Or even three? So that's a question that comes up a lot. It's a little bit easier to see if I show you some solid examples. So first of all, we have traditional compact maps. This is where we're trying to keep each community together. So on the left is City Compton. The city's an obvi shape, as you can see. But really, they went, tried to get four quadrants, and each district really is a quadrant of the city to the degree possible with the population required. They kept each community together in a city council district. Same thing with Glendale Unified on the right, very regional, a northern seat, an eastern seat, a southwestern seat, very regional, very keeping each community together. And that's kind of the first approach to communities of interest. And these are examples of jurisdictions that chose the second approach, which is trying to ensure you have multiple representatives for each community. Pasadena is probably the best known. If you know Old Town Pasadena? When Pasadena went to five district elections, they were just starting to work on redeveloping that area. It was really an area that didn't go after hard. And they wanted each council member to feel responsible and accountable to that project. And so you can see the line, the top-left map is a Pasadena City Council map. You can see the line through the middle of the city, that's Colorado Boulevard, and every district touches that redevelopment zone. So that each council member feels some accountability for that project. It leads to some odd-shaped districts as they kind of stretch down to touch that area, but it's for a clear policy reason. South Pasadena, the bottom, tiny, tiny little South Pasadena, the whole city is one square mile. And so they won't, they had to go to district elections, but they wanted to keep an at-large feel. They wanted each council member to the degree possible to keep a feel of responsibility for every neighborhood. So they decided not, it was too much to do it on the far right, given how the city's configured. But the three cities in the middle and in the west, each one stretches from the north end of the city to the south end of the city, so that each one has a piece of each neighborhood. And each neighborhood feels like they have actually the majority of the council that they can go to with their concerns. And then Central Unified is out here, Fresno. In the top right is Fresno, you can see kind of the denser streets. And they wanted each trustee area to represent both urban and rural areas, and every school has at least two, and in most cases, three, and in some cases, all five of the board members represent the attendance zone. So these are kind of policy-driven reasons why you might want multiple representatives from your area, and somewhat odd, admittedly somewhat odd-looking maps that come out of that policy decision. There's no right or wrong answer in terms of the Compton, Glendale approach or these three approaches, but this is the big challenge that faces us in every project, is which approach is best for the community, is the question. And we have maps that show both approaches for you to consider. So, starting with Draft A. In this case, this is really kind of the Pasadena, South Pasadena, Central Unified approach. You get one division, Division Three, that's mostly in the north, has a little piece down in Palm Springs. Division Two and Four have very significant populations both north and south, so those four members would be answering to voters in both regions. And then Division One has admittedly not a lot of people up north, but has kind of token representation up north. And then Division Five is the one that's entirely in the south. One of the things the law also requires is each time we put out a draft map, we put out a proposed election sequencing. So that's in the bottom left, and it's also on the PDF maps on the website. And so you can see the list, which divisions would propose be up in that year. And for example, where it says Bloom Reviewing in Five, it's two board members ending up in the same seat. So it reflects how the different choices play out with that continuity in office criterion. In this case, there is a pairing of board members. Draft B is kind of in between. So in this case, we have Division Two entirely in the north. Division Three is roughly, very roughly equal north and south population, so we're advancing both areas. And Division One also has significant population in the north and significant population in the south. So you get two, one in the north, two that are bridging both the north and the south, Desert Hot Springs and Palm Springs, Cathedral City area. And then Four and Five are both in the south. And I'm giving zoom-in versions. It's hard, as you can see in the PDF, so if you print out the packet, you have the packet. It's hard to see the details when you're looking at the whole district that those maps are on the website. And this one, as you can see in the bottom left, it does, it actually has two pairings. Both Divisions Five and Three have two board members, unless you end up with Two and Four are both vacant divisions. And Draft Map C, the final one, this is much more the Compton-Glendale approach. You get two seats up north, essentially, three, you have three seats where the population of voters are all Palm Springs. And this raises interesting questions, which again, there's no right answer to the question of which one is best for your jurisdiction. In this case, Desert Hot Springs essentially is guaranteed two seats. Granted, it might be for someone in the city or might be for someone just outside Desert Edge or something like that, but two seats up in the Desert Hot Springs area. And essentially, three seats in the Palm Springs-Cathedral City area. Here's the question for folks to wrestle with, is it still takes three votes to do anything? One of the things to keep in mind is that local jurisdictions are not the county, so they're not like county supervisors where a director kind of controls and makes all the decision for their or supervisor's district. In this case, all decisions will remain made by the board and will take three votes to do anything. So this is the question. Here, you're essentially guaranteed two northern Desert Hot Springs region seats, but you're also guaranteed a three-two split on the board. So that's where the question comes down, is which one makes the best, the most sense for your jurisdiction? And that's what we're here to discuss and look at. This one also has two vacancies, in this case because it puts three members together in Division One. Notice up in the top right, it references the interactive review map. The other piece that's on the website, if you really want to get into the details of these maps, is a interactive map where you can zoom in and really see the details. You can change to a satellite view, so you actually see exactly which houses are in which proposed divisions. And you can type in an address, and see exactly where each addresses as well. So that is available on the district website. So the discussion we're looking at today and tomorrow are to get your public input, that's our primary goal here, get your thoughts on the community of interest in the jurisdiction and draft maps, and then to look at any possible board direction. It is worth noting, we can't make new maps tonight and show them tomorrow because maps have to be posted and with advance of the year, so tomorrow will be the same maps. But we do want to advance until we can see the presentation. And then, that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
May I ask Mr. Johnson? Are there any questions? Mr. Johnson on the board? Any questions from the board on Mr. Johnson? I have none. Mr. Riddell? Would it be appropriate this time for anybody in the audience to ask questions of Mr. Johnson? Or is that something that you can do it later on?
Either way, either way, you can do it now or you can do it later. If you want to save it for when they come up, that's fine.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and we'll go to public hearing, item number four. At this time, I will open the public hearing for review of public input on draft maps for transition to election by division. And members of the public, please remember that you've got three minutes. Yes, sir. Mr. Martin?
Good morning. My name is Russ Martin. I'm the vice president of Mission Springs Water District. In the presentation from the previous presentation at the Lusano Center, and again today, you mentioned the population from the 2010 census, I believe, as being Desert Hot Springs, somewhere around 26,000, as I recall. And then you mentioned Whitewater and Desert Edge as being those areas of population that you were considering with respect to district. However, what wasn't mentioned was the population from Painted Hills, Mission Lakes, North Palm Springs, that's that area, South Dillon, and Palm Springs, unless you were saying that all those areas of population, which are somewhere around 5,000, were included in that. And if they were, why were they, why was Desert Edge separated in Whitewater when there were probably more people in Mission Lakes than there was in Whitewater and Desert Edge probably combined? So I'm kind of at a loss. Maybe you can clarify how the population broke down on that? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We'll, if you can assist that. I'll read my ten, but if any other speakers want? All right.
Excuse me, I'm a little flummoxed. I certainly wish that we could get answers to these questions rather than having our only one time, you know, five, three minutes. Do you understand what I'm saying, kind of, anyway? My question is usually basic.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Could we get the question answered?
Yeah. See, I think Russ has the right to have some questions answered. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to specific questions before I comment on the general map. Is that a fair understanding of where I come from?
Certainly.
I'd like to see that raised as a priority.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
All right. Mr. Johnson, would you like to answer the question number one?
Sure, happy to. So, all of the people are counted because we're using the data census block by census block, so it is getting all the people in all the different neighborhoods. The reason those two were called out is that they've been identified by the Census Bureau as what they call census-designated places. It's not an official government recognition by any means, it's just the Census Bureau trying to get a national feel of where there are unappropriated communities. And obviously, it's far from perfect. They miss some. They don't, they don't have borders that locals often agree with of exactly where the borders are. So those two are highlighted just because they are counted and tabulated by the Census Bureau, but all of the areas are there, all the people are counted in every neighborhood, whether it's identified as a CDP or not. You notice on that, on that chart, the numbers don't add up to the total of the jurisdiction, and that's because there are a lot more people in the jurisdiction that aren't in those census-designated places in the cities. So the good news is, is everyone's counted, even if the labels for those areas don't appear on the maps.
Mr. Martin? Can I answer your question?
Not exactly, because I'm still confused as to in which area, for example, Mission Lakes was included in population wise. Was that, that clearly wasn't Desert Hot Springs, so that's a separate city. So that wasn't included in the 26,000, so what area of population would they include? Would they include in the Whitewater population? Would they include in Desert Edge? Which area would they include in, and identify in the population?
So they would have been in the area that wasn't labeled on that map. They would have been the additional population.
Can you go back a minute?
Oh, sure. Yes. So there are obviously large areas of this map that are not included in the four cities and two CDPs identified. But the people that are, like, essentially west of Desert Edge, there's a lot of people there, they aren't in a labeled jurisdiction, but they are counted in the demographics. And that's why the numbers shown here don't add up to the total of the jurisdiction, because all those other people are there and are counted. They're counted where they are, street by street. They just didn't show up in this map because the census didn't identify. Yeah, if you go to the interactive map, there's actually a layer you can turn on that's the census blocks. And as you zoom in, that will have the census count of population for every city block on the map. And let's see what's in there.
Different questions?
Okay, I want to make sure, Mr. Martin already passed one. Is that okay? All right. Now, Mr. Baker, would you like to have another start in three minutes?
Well, I hope it's not, well, anyway, I want to ask a question specific. How is it determined with each of the drafts, which division will be included in the index election cycle? Why is it not the same for each? And then for each of the drafts? The second part of the question will tend to tend and will specifically address Map C. It would indicate would indicate for the next election, Divisions Four and Three would be up for reelection with incumbents. And yet, Division Two and Three would remain vacant, so I assume by remaining vacant, the holders that are not, incumbents are not nonvalued, and they would be filling that vacant spot until the 2022 election. Is that correct? And does this all basically amount to another form of polite gerrymandering?
So, again, this is proposed sequencing. Oh, sorry. Again, this is proposed sequencing and it's subject to change based on public input and Board's decisions. But the first step when we are assigning election years is to look at the directors, and if a director is alone in a seat, or if there are two directors in a seat who are up in the same year, it gets assigned to their year. Because that lets the voters decide whether that director has earned reelection. Otherwise, it doesn't matter what the voters think, that, that board member is off the Board at the end of their term. So we want to keep the voters empowered making those decisions rather than the lines dictating the voters, or board members on or off. After that, when we, when we get vacancies, then we look at trying to take the lowest turnout divisions, which typically, but not always, are the, also the protected class Voting Rights Act seats. We want to try to put them on the presidential year if we can as a second step in the decision process. That way, more people are voting in the Board elections than if that seat is in an off-year election. So those are the steps we go through in coming up with the proposed sequencing, but it is hoping to change if the Board decides to change it.
Open to change. In other words, from a totally objective viewpoint, you could establish the districts based upon whatever criteria we determine. And let's say, for example, C. And as the most seats then are not vacant, or that are vacant and unrepresented, those divisions that are represented on the newly dropped map, all of the vacant positions could then go up for election, is a possibility? And wouldn't that be certainly a more fair way to approach the Intention of Voting Rights Act? As I think what you're explaining is, from what I understand, you feel the intention of Voting Rights Act is to protect the incumbents in that seat for as long as possible?
No, so the intent to the Voting Rights Act is, the intent of all the election code is to empower the voters.
To empower the voters by designating communities of interest primarily, even though it started out as a identifiable ethnic census-type designation. Correct?
I'm not following that.
You don't follow the community of interest as a primary criteria for establishing an individual?
The law does not set up...
It doesn't. Okay. We're going to get that, we're getting into opinion rather than...
I should, oh, on the second part of this first question about the, if there are vacancies, you are correct. The, the members whose terms end in 2022 remain at-large members until 2022, so the senators do have representation of the elected members, just as they do today.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, or good morning. My name is Sergio Spericueta from Catedral City. I'm, I'm appreciating the demographic corporation to try to keep that Catedral City resident to get in the draft, A, and B. I'm, my, the one that I feel more comfortable as a Catedral City resident is in draft B. The only, that I'm asked to, the Board to consider to have the Division Four for election in 2020. And the second choice I like is the, is draft Eight. And that one had election in 2020. And this is, and I was involved in the Catedral City district to change the district process. The only difference that I remember is they gave the opportunity to the resident to draw their own maps. I don't know, it's not easy, it's not easy to deal with the, with the information to draft maps. I'm, I prefer to give my opinion talking about my, my own area because I, I want to respect the Desert Hot Springs, the state of its own choices. And I support the whole map, but I, I want to clarify that I'm, I'm talking only about the specific map that cover my neighborhood thing.
Mr. President?
Yes, Director.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, please. Please do.
Is it okay to interact with the...
Oh, sure.
We're trying to have a discussion here about maps. Okay. Can I ask you a question? Come back. So you indicated that, that your preference was for maps B or A, provided that, provided that Cathedral City Division would have heard in 2020. Is that what you said?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I appreciate the demographic corporation to keep the, the home neighborhood and Dream Homes neighborhood together. That, I think that is important for us.
So, so you're okay, excuse me, so you're okay with combining the code and...
Yes.
And the Dream Homes in the one district?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I, I live in the, in the Dream Homes.
Right, I know.
And I want to add one point for Mr. Rumor. And for history, the, in the past election, many of us don't know about that the, why did this exist? She was the first candidate that looked for us and had a meeting in our neighborhood. I think I was back in that last election, who was looking for us?
You.
You are? I apologize for that, for not found the time to meet with you. You are another one that, that showed interest to that conversation. But at the same time, I think it's not only the candidate, it's not only the director that had to look for us, also we had to do our part, our resident, and to put more attention in the system. Thank you.
Thanks for your answer. That clarified for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. My name is Arden Wallam. I'm the General Manager for Mission Springs Water District. I always try to be a positive person and hopeful that this would be a transparent and inclusive process. Since you have these hearings set back to back, a bit of that hopefulness has been, has deteriorated. And I hope, it seems apparent that maybe you've already made up your mind. I hope you're open to the different maps. I do have one that I, that I think we like the best. We've also hired David Eli, a fairly well-known demographer that is going to help us review these maps and give back to you with some more comments. But we did have a chance to look at them on Thursday. We spent till seven or eight that night. And with that said, our conclusion was, in going through the three maps, that Map A, in our conclusion, I think was clearly designed to be consistent. And there were some comments made that that's kind of what, what happens now and then. We will object to this map if that is your predetermined option. I think it's a classic sidestepping of the intent of the process and contradicts the election code, but basically, you have some glaring things in that option, like District Three is not contiguous. Map B is getting better. This is a districting that we may object to. District Three, again, is not contiguous in this, in this map. And District One is also very strangely designed. It looks like it has a very rural area, and I am confused as to whether it does have the 18,000 people, but I'm sure it does. We're going to go back and take a look. But at best, in this option, Mission Springs would only have one director ever, even possible. Map C is something that I was happy to see you present. This is much better and may very well be very acceptable to us. You see everything in this map. I know that you said that this guarantees it's only two, but that's all we would ever expect. And frankly, to be fair, we're not expecting to have three of the five. We just want to be represented. And we realize the reality of, of the situation. We need to evaluate the voting trends in each of these areas. But so far, this, Map C does look fairly hopeful. I do hope this is the map that you select, but we will come back to you with further comments. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Mr. Crawford.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. So my name is Dieter Crawford. I was born and raised in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. My background is in public health, community health. I graduated from Long Island University, San Manuel Gateway College. And so, the map that I like is Map C. And I'm just taking that from a little background that I had. I recently worked with the city of Palm Springs on the creation of their maps. Ultimately, they selected a map that a lot of members from the community of Desert Highland and I, myself, helped to draw. And I also worked with the Desert Healthcare District recently on the early mapping. And we had a young lady from the Dream Homes neighborhood get elected to the Desert Healthcare District Board of Directors. Her name is Yvette Perez Gil. So I just wanted to interject that really fast. But yeah, one of the things that stayed out to me in Map C is the deviation from the ideal population in District Two and Three, the majority minority districts. If you look, if you look at the non-Hispanic white population in District Four and Five, there are almost 1,000 people off from the other districts. I understand that we're trying to keep Desert Hot Springs together and trying to keep some of the neighborhoods together, but we've seen in places like Indio where elections were won on a couple dozen votes. So I think that that six, 700, 1,000 people will make a big difference. Then one of the other things that stood out to me is, I know you guys were trying to create the majority minority district with District Two, but it seemed like going down Palm Drive would be the ideal border instead of Verbena and West. And then, one thing that stood out, another thing that stood out in the, on Map C with District One, is the Historic Tennis Club neighborhood. Like I say, I live up in the Desert Highland. I feel that we have more in common with the residents of Whitewater, West Garnet, and Desert Hot Springs than we do with the wealthy residents in the Historic Tennis Club. I think that our communities of interest are low-income residents and then also the residential rate payers. And then, another thing that stood out to me with the, the election process for Map C, I think that it would be best if we put the majority minority districts for election first. I understand that it's not in a presidential year, and in the presidential year, you get more turnout, but the whole purpose is to try to get a minority elected, so why wait another two years? I say we put them on right away. Once again, my name is Dieter Crawford. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
If I could, I'll ask you a question to give my opinions now?
Listen, you've already, Mr. Riddell? Mr. Baker has had three minutes. And this time, is it appropriate for him to ask a question? And not use a...
I, it's up to the discretion of the Board, but I, it seems to me with a small group that it's still clear to exceed the three minutes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. I don't feel persecuted.
Don't feel aggrieved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chaffey. I appreciate your caution.
Thank you.
I, from a, the presentation today, I think Map C makes the most sense. I have real issues with A, in terms of anything with regards to community of interest. I substantially believe that crossing the freeway to create a community of interest really defeats the purpose of the definition of the community of interest. I agree with Mr. Crawford on almost entirely everything he said this morning. There are a few of us that have spent a little bit of time studying this. The other thing is with Map C, I would also think, and I think would be appropriate, that the divisions that are currently not being represented be the ones that are up for election. That puts some directors in a uncomfortable spot. But let me point out another thing that I think needs to happen in this process, which I think would be an ultimate compromise. I firmly believe the duties of the Desert Water Agency is the groundwater protector for the whole aquifer, which includes the north and south sides of the ITN freeway. Our duties and functions totally different and separate from the running of the DWA retail water service portion of the agency. I feel that at best interest of the public would serve, should there be a split with the current organization so that DWA as a retail agency has its own Board with its five members to service the retail customers in that area, which are very substantial, rather than being governed by a Board that will potentially have two outsiders that have no germane interest within the DWA retail issue. Are you understanding where I'm coming from? That, to me, seems to be the best compromise, that you have a layer of electors or elected officials responsible for the administration of the groundwater in the boundaries described by the state in the legislation of 1960-something, I think that's what it was done. And then, there'd be another agency to service the retail customers. When I took Law Water Policy at Cal State San Bernardino with Jill Willis, who works for the Lurdic Council's firm, she was then the Water Policy Attorney Specialist. There's only two districts in the state that have both retail and wholesale jurisdiction within themselves. One is CDWD, the other is DWA. I don't think it makes sense. Thank you for that extra time.
Next speaker? Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Grace Garner. I'm a Palm Springs resident. You may already be planning on this, but I was just hoping that you could discuss the next steps in the process before the meeting is over, what your, what your plan is with me.
So let me go ahead and address that right now. The next step, this is required meeting number three. Required meeting number four will take place tomorrow, giving the regular session of the meeting of Board Directors of Desert Water Agency at our headquarters on Giatra. Part of that agenda will be a public hearing, which will be number four. And the next required public meeting would be number five, which will be the meeting at which the Board will discuss and then select one of the maps. But at this, at our meeting today and at the meeting tomorrow, is the chance for us to hear from you, what we have today, with regards to which of these maps do you find would be the best for your purposes in being part of the election. for your purposes in being part of the electorate? Does that answer your question? And at this point in time, the date for the required number five has not been set, but it will be set. And if you watch the dwa.org, this message will be letting everyone know well in advance when that next meeting will be. Yes, Director Scoffi.
It's my understanding that while we have required hearings, we can have as many hearings as we want after the fourth hearing. So we may in fact be having a forum room as time goes by. But the fifth hearing or the adoption hearing is not set yet. If the board feels wants more, we continue to have these public hearings. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. With one caveat, that the map that's adopted must be posted on the website and available at least seven days before adoption.
Right.
So that's really the deadline for getting additional input on, or at least for looking at alternative maps.
Okay. My reason for stating this is that I'm not comfortable yet with public input. I think it's my opinion, but I think we'd be using more public input than I'm just doing now in meeting five. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board's issue?
Good morning. My name is Gary Gardner. I'm a resident here in Desert Hot Springs, I'm also a resident of the Hot Springs City Council. But please keep in mind, I'm speaking only for myself this morning. I'm glad to see you come over to our side of the world, and I'm glad to see districts. They're fair for the residents of Desert Hot Springs. It's something I have been asking for at least a year now. I'm going to echo as well the other speakers. My personal preference is for map number C first and then B second. And I would also echo what my good friend, Mr. Bowman, had said. You could save us all a lot of money by allowing NSW to be the groundwater management agency out here. In fact, you could probably scrap this entire exercise. And if you did that, Desert Hot Springs would not have any retail customers, and DWA would be entirely separate and serve that side of the freeway. And we would have the groundwater management agency out here for us, much the same way IID is suffering now and trying to figure out what's in with their electrical ratepayers, the majority of which reside on this side of Imperial County and Riverside County as opposed to the entire board being elected from Imperial County. Thank you much for your time this morning.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Mr. Bowman?
Board, thank you very much for coming and presenting the various options, the drafts of the districting. I also favor C because it solves the problem. The problem being, we want an equal voice. And the legal or the non-legal requirements that were pointed out by your consultant, if you apply communities of interest, contiguous, visible barriers, and planned future growth, they all fail with drafts A and B. The visible boundary of I-10 and Indian is made even more visible when you have the wind that's been kicking up all that sand. And we can't even get rescue vehicles from our side of the freeway down to desert region. It's a natural barrier. It's a huge barrier. The communities of interest, we know that up here, the north side of the freeway, we have a very unique environment. It's different than your area south of the freeway. So these non-legal requirements of the districting fail with drafts A and B. I do appreciate the online map. I've played with it a lot, and I've learned a number of things regarding the whole districting. What Carl said, there is some truth to, and that is, there should probably be two boards. I don't know that MSWD would like two of DWA's people up here on the retail end of things. And I'm sure you probably would not want us down there, but that's what's going to happen somehow with these plans. If you had a separate board for retail and a separate board for wholesale, problem is absolutely solved and equality is based. Lastly, your consultants said that drafts map C, it would still take three votes. But my absolute response to that is that we would at least have two votes. I can promise you that trying to get our electorate out for A or B, you still would probably get more votes. And that we still wouldn't have anybody up representing us on your board. So, and it would also imply that your board would never view us or would not be open-minded to support the data, which I don't think is true with the ads. Anyway, please consider C. It's going to happen. It's just about doing it now. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. Everybody has a chance to make their opinions heard. And if I may ask, has everybody who has had a chance to talk, do you feel that your questions have been answered and that you have been heard?
I can attest to that.
Because if not, please come up and try again. If you feel that you've been slighted in some way, or you've not been listened to, or your questions have not been answered directly.
Bending the rules of refreshment. Thank you.
Would you like a fourth attempt, Mr. Baker?
No, I don't. I'm going to talk tomorrow morning. Please, no, no.
Mr. Martin apparently wants to veto that.
Nothing more for me.
Okay. There's no further input from the public? We open it up to members of the board. Are there any remarks that the board would like you to make or something?
Just a comment. The only comment that I would offer is that the comments we've heard here today allude to what, to me, is an important community of interest in determining these, and that is ratepayers. That is a community of interest to me, and I'm going to be especially interested in attending to and looking at these maps. So I appreciate some of the comments we've heard about ratepayers. That, to me, is a very important community of interest for the Desert Water Agency. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else on board? I can give you comments. All right, is everybody aware that tomorrow, another hearing is going to happen at DWA? Our big orders are pretty similar to today. Mr. Johnson will not be with us, but a similar PowerPoint presentation decided today will be presented by Mr. Crawford, our general manager. So this is your last chance to talk to us or ask us questions before the panel brings and we close the public hearing. All right, so no further folks that want to talk with us? I'm going to close the public hearing. I want to thank you, everybody, for being here today, your hospitality. Have refreshments. Please have refreshments on your way out and make this home all look back to our headquarters. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments. And our meeting is adjourned.